Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to call to order tonight's regular meeting of Tiburon Town Council for Wednesday, May 3rd. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Thier.
Here.
Councilmember Wellner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Here.
And Mayor Ryan.
Here, thank you. At this point, we open, before we get into the regular agenda, we open the meeting up for members of the public who'd like to speak on items that are not on our agenda. So if there's anyone in the public who wants to do that, this is the opportunity to do that. Could we please, Madam Clerk, could you please instruct the members of the public on how to do that?
Yes, thank you. If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you'd like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your Webinar Controls Bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're using Zoom, I will invite you to turn your camera and microphone on to address the council. Please accept the request from the Zoom host that you're being promoted to a panelist. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand.
Thank you very much. And I didn't say this before, but as everyone probably knows, you have three minutes to do, to speak. And I start with members of the, in the, in the chambers. And I know Mr. Artman has said he'd like to speak. So if you want to step to the podium and identify yourself, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. Thanks.
Perhaps I can just move the microphone over to where I'm sitting here. I'm speaking now in regards to press reports that the council expects to, in the future, ban the replacement of broken gas appliances, natural gas appliances in homes and buildings in Tiburon. I think this is absolutely absurd, considering the fact that replacing a natural gas appliance with an electric appliance, be it a stove or a furnace, generally requires extensive rewiring in the building and may require new electrical service from PG&E to provide the amount of electricity needed to handle the additional load. The newspaper reports, the art newspaper reports that residents of Point Tiburon have already had a difficult time trying to gain approval or whatever from PG&E to get electric charging stations installed in their garages. Common reports indicate that it can take two months for PG&E to respond to and get new electrical service. And if somebody's furnace goes out on December 15th, I think it's really, really unreasonable to expect them to wait until February 15th to have heat. It will do two things. It will encourage people to use unsafe methods for heating, be they existing stoves for space heating or space heaters. And it will drive an economy of calling somebody in Reno who knows what to do and can buy a gas furnace there, bring it down and install it with no permit work or anything else, but get it done by tomorrow. So the homeowner has heat. I think that banning replacements is not a good policy. I distinguish this from efforts to encourage installation of electrical feeds. That is, that provides a choice. And choices are good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for speaking. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to speak on items not on the agenda? Yeah, please come to the podium and state your name, and then you'll have three minutes. Thanks.
Yes, I'm Mrs. Pamela McConnell Douglas, and I have been a resident of Tiburon for over six years. Raised by two children as a single parent, and this is my husband. Yes, yes, yeah. Well, I was targeted by the number of the art newspaper, and I was just stunned by how he treated me. He came behind me and choked my neck. And my husband is my witness to that, and I feel that no other human being should be targeted like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for speaking. Is there anyone else in the chambers who'd like to make a comment? Oh, yeah, please. Good evening, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and council members and staff. My name is Crystal Duran. I'm the library director here for Belvedere Tiburon Library. I'm just here to share actually about the library's inaugural Green Week that's happening next week, Monday through Saturday. The library received funding from a state grant to provide resources and opportunities to engage the community in discussion and activities around sustainability, climate resiliency, things like that. And so we've taken this opportunity to create a Green Week, and we've got a great lineup of activities going on. On Monday, we have a screening of Empowered Energy Heroes. It's by a local Bay Area filmmaker, Kiki Goché. It'll follow up with a Q and A and discussion. On Tuesday, we have award-winning bestselling author Obie Kaufman that'll be with us on Tuesday evening as well. On Thursday, we have a marine biologist from the Marine Mammal Center, Bill Keener, who'll be talking to us about the return of whales in the Bay Area. And then on Saturday, we are ending the week with the Sustainability Fair. It'll be an event from 10 to 1:00. And it'll have a few different activities. We've got Mill Valley Refuge. We'll have a trash checkout, so the kids can see the trash truck and demo. They'll have a, get, get to have a chance to play with recycling and sorting trash is the best way to describe it. We've got e-bike demonstrations for those who are interested or curious to learn more about e-bikes. And we've got a different array of activities for people of all ages, including a planting corner for kids and for teens and things like that. And the highlight for that day as well will be a bestselling author, Anne-Marie Benot, better known as Zero Waste Chef, will be doing a presentation at 11:00 AM that morning. And so I'd love to invite you all in the public to the library's Green Week activities and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And is that schedule of events on the website?
It is. Thank you for saying that.
It sounds great.
I just wanted to say something if I can. We normally don't respond to public comment, but since you are the director of the library, I wanted to thank you. That sounds like a fabulous week, and I especially love the way that you're engaging all different ages of our community, and I just really wanted to give a big thank you to you.
Thanks. And Madam Clerk, is there anybody online who'd like to speak?
We do have one member of the public online, Peter Yalas.
Okay, great. She could let Mr. Yalas in. That'd be great.
Good evening.
Hi there. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Yeah, my name is Peter Yalas. I'm actually a resident of Belvedere, but I'm here just to speak. And thank you for moving forward on the building electrification codes. I've submitted prior written comments, and I just wanted to reiterate a few points, just very briefly. One is that.
So sorry, I don't know, can I, you know, for a second? So that is on our agenda tonight? So you will have an opportunity to speak on this item? Can we wait until that item?
It's on consent.
Yeah, but so his, that was a slightly different issue, and he will speak on the actual consent item before us. So sorry, can we, can we just, can you just wait for two seconds? Because we'll, we'll be speaking about it in a second.
I can. I won't be able to, to speak later, but I'm.
All right, go ahead, finish up.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Just very briefly, I just, again, just wanted to thank you so much for moving forward with the electrification codes. It's so important. I know it's doable. I've done it myself. My home is fully electrified. It's economic. There are thousands of dollars available for people to electrify their homes. And it's so important to do it right away. Time is of the essence. So, and it's in within the purview of the council to do this. So anyway, I wanted to just thank you again. So important. It's really one of the most important things I think you can do as a council, and I'm excited to be living in this community. So thank you so much. That's all I have to say.
Thanks for your comment. Sorry for interrupting you. Anybody else online who wants to speak?
Seeing none.
Okay, so I'll close the open comment period, public comment period, and then I'll bring it to the consent agenda. And first, I will ask if any members of the council want to have any items that they want to, oh, first, I have to announce that staff has asked that we pull item CC5 and post, continue that until the next meeting. So we won't be going forward with that one tonight. And then is there anyone on the council who wants to pull any other item? Did you, I, I, so I, I would like to pull item seven, eight, and nine. And then before I entertain a motion on the other items that are still on the agenda, so is there anybody in the, in the public who wants to speak on any items that I haven't pulled? So the consent, that's a good question. So the consent calendar, normally we would vote to approve it with one vote. And by pulling it, it means I'm taking it off of that blanket approval, and we're going to discuss it individually. Yeah. And so then the other thing I want to say is, on the consent agenda, as it now exists, there's an item amending the town manager's employment agreement that requires this brief oral report before we adopt it by consent, and that is that pursuant to Government Code, Section 54953(c)(3), the amendment will increase the town manager's annual salary and provide for a one-time payment for unused vacation by the amounts reflected in the staff report. And now, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have a second. And I, we don't need a roll call vote, right? So all in vote, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Great. Motion passes. So I'm going to start with items eight and nine first, if that's okay. And I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that we have some officers here, and this is a proclamation and adopting a resolution in honor of National Police Week. So I'd love it if Madam Clerk could read the resolution.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Tiburon declaring May 14 through 20, 2023 National Police Week in the Town of Tiburon and directing staff to fly the US flag at town facilities at half-staff on May 15 and observance of Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas, the Town of Tiburon wishes to recognize National Police Week 2023 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And whereas, there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Tiburon Police Department. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed or died in the line of duty, including Sergeant John E. Kim of the Tiburon Police Department, who died of a massive heart attack while on duty in 1979. And whereas, the names of the multiple, the names of multiple dedicated public servants who made the ultimate sacrifice are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas, 556 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 224 officers killed in 2022 and 332 officers killed in previous years. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Office, National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 35th Candlelit Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2023. And whereas, the National Police Week will be observed this year, May 14 through 20. And whereas, May 15 is dedicated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved, the Town Council of the Town of Tiburon will observe May 14 through 20, 2023 as National Police Week in the Town of Tiburon, publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation, and directs staff to display the United States' flag at all town facilities to half-staff on May 15, 2023 and observance of National Peace Officer Memorial Day, passed and adopted this third day of May, 2023.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Officer and Sergeant, for being here and for your, your service. Is there anyone on, in the public who'd like to comment on this agenda item? Do you see anyone online?
Seeing none.
Okay, thanks. Anyone on the council who needs to comment? Okay.
So I just wanted to underscore the importance of this for officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice and who have died or been killed in the line of duty. I think it's a really good idea to have one day, and I'm glad that President Kennedy actually made a day and that we are honoring those officers by flying the flag half-staff here in Tiburon. And I also wanted to thank all of our officers in Tiburon PD for their service to this community.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Sure, go ahead. Vice Mayor Fredericks.
I would like to add my thanks. And not only for those days when you're in the ultimate danger, but for the days when you reach out to us and remind us that you are part of our community, and if there's ever a loss, the whole community is a loss. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then so then we can move on to item nine and.
I think we need to move and.
Oh, oh, yes, sorry, my bad. Yes. So do I have a motion to adopt the resolution? Vice Mayor Fredericks and second from Councilmember Thier, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, great. The motion passes unanimously. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, is there anything you'd like to say? You're welcome to.
We appreciate that very much. You know, obviously, we've had a loss very recently that you know, really impact to our PD and the community as a whole. I mean, we've all got support from the community regarding that incident. And you just never know. So a day like that to remember and to and reflect.
Thank you. Thank you. And now for item CC9, this is similar in that it honors the Public Works. And we're here to adopt a resolution for National Public Works Week, and we have with us the Director of Public Works. So we wanted to acknowledge him and a crossover between the Police Department and Public Works for you, right? So if you could read that proclamation, Madam Clerk, that'd be great. Thanks.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Tiburon declaring May 21 through 27, 2023 National Public Works Week in the Town of Tiburon. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the Town of Tiburon. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government in the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for all our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the Town of Tiburon to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2023 marks, marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Town Council of the Town of Tiburon does hereby designate the week of May 21 through 27, 2023 as National Public Works Week urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life, passed and adopted this third day of May, 2023.
Thank you very much. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to comment on this agenda item? No one here? Anybody online?
Seeing none.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment period, and I'll bring it back to council for discussion or comments.
And as thankful as we are of the quotidian work you do that is not always acknowledged, I think another aspect of your work that needs to be acknowledged is your role in emergencies and public disasters. It's sort of on the shelf. We don't take it out and look at it enough, but we know you're there, and I think those of us who are aware of it appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Well said. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would like to say something. So I'll follow up on my colleague's comments, and I think Patrick knows that I can't pass up an opportunity to say thank you. With these big storms and other issues we've had to deal with in the last year, probably two years, you know, it is your leadership and the department's work that has kept things moving and running in Tiburon, and I just wanted to thank you. I'm glad that we're celebrating this as part of American Public Works Week, as part of the American Public Works Association. You know, and I just wanted to thank you and your staff and the entire department.
Thanks. And so I'll just say one quick thing. So when I was first running for Town Council, Emmett O'Donnell, who was former mayor and council member, he was telling me, he's like, people only care about the four Ps. And he's like, police, and public works, and the other two don't matter. So so it's good to see all of you here and to be able to honor you. Yeah. Could I have a motion to adopt this resolution, please?
So moved.
A second? All in favor of adopting the resolution? Say aye. Aye. Okay, great. The motion passes unanimously. And now we move on to CC7, which is, has to do with municipal code amendments. Do we have anything? So, so, sorry, yeah, so I pulled it because I know that Mr. Artman wanted to speak, so I will right away open it up for public comment. So, Mr. Artman, if you want to speak for three minutes on this item, we'd love to hear it.
Thank you. Let me start by distinguishing my comments here on a few grounds. First, I do not oppose the required electrification measures. I think they provide choice, and I think that's a good thing for subsequent occupiers of buildings. The ordinance instead removes choice when it comes to natural gas. Second, these comments are addressed to the particular item here which forbids natural gas piping and similar accommodations in new buildings and some remodelings. Additionally, I'd like to say I'm not speaking, as I was before, to the policy of this, this restriction, but I'm going to focus on the legality of it and the insanity of passing an ordinance that is clearly illegal under federal law as recently decided by the United States Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. This simply invites litigation for Tiburon. And there is absolutely no reason to do it now. Berkeley is fighting this fight. They're bigger than we are. They have more money than we are, and frankly, they're more committed to this than I think the citizens of Tiburon are. And to sit there now and invite litigation expense, which lawyers may love because it drives billable hours, and you can sure charge a lot for that. But to risk the town incurring this sort of litigation just for political grandstanding and to say, hey, this is what we think, is ridiculous. This should be pulled. It should be amended to remove the natural gas provisions. Go ahead, fine with the electric provisions. And if Berkeley wins, or if federal law changes, these provisions can easily be adopted later. There's no need to do it now. And if it happens now, and if there's litigation expense, I will be back here inviting every single one of you to personally pay those bills because you're not accomplishing anything by doing this. And you are instead only risking the tax money and the coffers and the treasury of the Town of Tiburon by doing it. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Yeah, please approach the podium and state your name, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. And then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Oh. Oh, geez, I didn't. I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you where I live.
Thanks.
Rob Poole. My family's been here 100 years. You know, with all due respect, I don't know when I gave my sovereignty over to this board to decide how I heat my home or how I heat my water. It's just ridiculous and making making everything electric. I mean, we don't have a grid that'll handle even close to what is being proposed. To make cars all-electric, we need to start today installing in the state 3,000 chargers a day. You know, the whole thing is ridiculous, not to mention the environmental problems that go along with it. Gas is super efficient, super clean. Now, somebody mentioned in something I was reading about childhood asthma rates. The worst problem we've ever had with childhood asthma rates is when the EPA of California mandated MTBE in the fuel. I got asthma. I'm still affected by it. The childhood asthma rate went up 40% overnight. Took six years to get the stuff out. It was totally useless. People made money on it, granted. That's the kind of thing the EPA does. They don't, they don't have any forward sight. You know, their unintended consequences be damned. And that's kind of what this is. It's just it's not right. I don't know where I, you know, where you have the right to do that to remove natural gas. It's just, as he says, ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody else who wants to speak online?
Seeing none. Oh, excuse me, Sana Thomas.
Okay.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. So please go ahead after you state your name, and then.
Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor and council members. I'm Sana Thomas, and like Peter Yalas who spoke earlier, I do want to thank you for moving forward with the, this ordinance to amend the municipal code. And as we all know, the world is experiencing an increasingly life-threatening climate crisis, a true climate emergency, and all levels of government are being called upon to exercise all their authority to act quickly, boldly, and effectively. And among its many authorities, Tiburon is responsible for the health and safety of its residents, for developing and implementing a municipal building code that ensures the health and safety of building occupants, and by state law, for reducing its greenhouse gas emissions and achieving carbon neutrality by 2045, which means basically the health and safety of our planet, our only home. Also required by state law, specifically by the California Global Warming Solutions Act of 2006, is mandatory reporting of greenhouse gas emissions. So each year, Tiburon develops a greenhouse gas inventory to check on its progress in reducing its greenhouse gas emissions. Tiburon not only has the authority, but it is mandated by multiple state laws and policy to. Tiburon not only has the authority, but it is mandated by multiple state laws and policy to to address global warming, which we mean, which means. Reducing greenhouse gas emissions which are caused by natural gas. And to take action now. So these building and vehicle. Electrification amendments to the municipal code. That are up for consideration tonight are the result of a very thoughtful, very careful and very collaborative countywide process. They're also in complete accordance with its recently with town's recently updated climate action plan. And are referenced in at least three of the strategy areas of the cap, which was presented to the public. And discussed at multiple regular meetings of the council. So there's really nothing fundamentally new or surprising about the ordinance. Amending the town's municipal code. And I do want to mention, it's something that I had mentioned in the past, but I want to come back to it. Is that the proposed ordinance applies to new construction. Except when remodels of single family homes exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet. Or involve a kitchen or bathroom remodel or an electrical panel upgrade. In those cases, the ordinance establishes a target score and and point system, an incentive system. And provides a list of very doable options for energy efficiency and electrification to choose from. No one's mandated to get any, any particular gas appliance. They can meet their target with a variety of other energy efficiency. And electrification measures like lighting upgrades and window replacement, et cetera. And I also want to mention that. That the, that we, it doesn't make sense to wait. And we, we are in an urgent climate emergency situation and we do have. We have the capacity to, the grid capacity, the equipment and installation ability to get started now. And we'll be able to keep up with the demand over the decades that it'll take to fully transition away from fossil fuels. So there's a, we're in this. Thank you for, thank you for the time.
Thank you for the comments. Is there anyone else in the public would like to speak?
Seeing none.
Okay, I'll close public comment period and I'll bring it back to the council for a discussion or motion. Yeah, Vice Mayor Fredericks, please.
Yeah, you know, I, I think. We all know. Our interest in reducing legal risks and we all know that we have. Two options here. We can sever the partial portion of the ordinance. Relating to the ban of natural gas pending the outcome of the Berkeley litigation. Or we can just pass the ordinance as it is and not enforce it until there's closure on the legal issues. And I say this just to frame our discussion.
Oh, thank you. That's really critical. Councilor Wallner.
Thanks. So I'm delighted that these reach codes have reached us finally and we have an opportunity to vote on them as has been. As was noted by Sana Thomas. We are in a climate emergency. We passed a resolution, I think over a year ago now. Declaring that the Town of Tiburon recognizes that emergency. We have. Very carefully and over a long period of time developed and upgraded our climate action plan in order to be able to achieve very ambitious goals. To. Contribute as much as we can as a community. To. Fight climate change. We have a sustainability element that we are about to look at. At our next council meeting, which has become part of our. General plan or will become part of our general plan. And I, I believe it is the strong consensus of. Tiburon residents that we need to take action and we need to do it now. I take issue with one comment that I heard. Earlier about natural gas being clean. I'm not sure what that means, but. On a twenty year timescale, it has eighty four times more climate. Warming potential than carbon dioxide. So. While it may. Be transparent and it may. Not emit an odor unless we add. Gas to the mix, it certainly. Has a very strong impact on our climate. With regard to the legal issue, I. Echo what. Councilmember Fredericks said earlier, I think we should. She didn't frame it as an advocacy. She gave us a choice, but I think we should. Pass all of the reach codes. We should perhaps withhold enforcement until. Legal issues clarified. I think the litigation is far from over. There's an initial decision by the Court of Appeal, but I think that's. Likely to be further appealed. And I'm excited to do our part to fight the. Climate emergency that we're in. So I hardly approve approving all of the read codes.
Councilor there, did you want to speak?
Sure, thank you. You know, we are in a climate emergency. We have spent a lot of time and I love. What John said about the reach codes finally reaching us. We've been waiting for this day for a very long time. I do. Believe that, you know, this is consistent with our town's climate action plan. It's consistent with our sustainability elements. And I do think there's also choices for residents. I don't think there's only one thing you can do. With respect to the reach codes and with respect to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. I think the time is now. I don't think we can wait. I'm in favor of passing all three reach codes. I don't know that we need to put it on hold. Because I think the litigation is going to be ever changing. So maybe it's monitoring the litigation. And making adjustments if we need to, once there's a final resolution, which I just don't believe there is right at the moment. So I would be in favor of passing all three reach codes. I'm very excited about this. And I think it's going to go a long way to helping our community reduce, reduce our own greenhouse gas emissions and. Help meet our climate goals.
Thanks. And then with respect to the non enforcement issue, is there anything that we need, we would need to do in the. Motion to affect that. Direction to staff or is that?
Maybe that's a question for our council, but I, I guess my opinion of that matter is that we can leave that to the discretion of the town council.
I mean, town attorney.
Town attorney, yeah. Not the discretion of the town council.
He. Singular.
Didn't you tell when I'm saying council versus councils?
I guess like. You can, you've provided the direction on the record. And like every ordinance that we have, we always analyze whether or not there's issues in the effective forcibility.
Okay, thank you very much. So unfortunately, there's not. Yeah, that's, that's the best way to do it or call email. So, so given that, is there anybody who will make a motion?
I'm happy to move to adopt the three beach codes.
Second. I would like to amend the motion to include direction to the staff. To delay enforcement until. The legal issues are resolved.
And does that need a second or does the original motion need to accept it?
The original motion needs to accept it and.
Sure.
Okay, and do I need a new second or is the second enforced? Okay, so all in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
It doesn't have to be a roll call vote for the second time, only the first time. We're good, four zero.
You don't need a roll call is what you're saying, right?
And so now we move on to action item one on the agenda. It is the Juneteenth event. We're considering a request to close Main Street on Saturday, June seventeenth, and I'm wondering if we have a staff report.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is. Sort of repeat from an item you folks discussed last year. For the third year, members of the diversity task force are organizing a Juneteenth celebration. And as is our practice, they are requesting a street closure. So we're bringing it to council for. For review. Excuse me, I'm on my rung. Let me just get to the right. There we go. Apologize for that. So there are two items, there are two related items that councils being asked to consider. First is a street closure, which would. Is being proposed to occur from two PM to seven PM on Saturday, June seventeenth. The street closure would allow for activities to be spread over a larger area. And for people not to have to worry about traffic while they're enjoying the event. The event organizers have indicated that the event would be very similar to the event that has occurred in the past two years. And I believe several council members participated in this. And the second part of. It progresses the financial matter. The council has supported this event financially two years in a row. This year in the adopted budget, council included twelve thousand five hundred dollars. As a line item specifically for diversity inclusion task force activities. That twelve thousand five hundred dollars has been expended on two prior events, the Nauru's event, which occurred fairly recently in the Persian. No, the Diwali event that occurred this past fall. So the organizers are requesting that council provide financial assistance to the event again. This would require a small budget amendment. Since the line item is already expended and we're. In the staff report, we indicated that would be seventy five hundred dollars. I do know that one member of the task force is online, but I'm not sure if Ruben is prepared to speak. Ruben, if you are watching and would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Oh, good. Okay, so, okay, task force member caller is. Great, thank you. Thanks.
Hello, council. And fellow task force members, yeah, just. Yeah, I don't know if you guys can hear me. We're just excited about the next Juneteenth event. And yeah, we'd love to get your support for. Another, another event. I think we'll definitely come in under budget and just wanted to get approval for the street closure. It's going to be sort of at the tail end of the car show. But as this is a national holiday, we do feel it's going to be great, you know, Annette and I met on Monday. I feel like it's going to be great to get. More people from out of town to show that Tiburon is a leader and welcoming for. Members of the community such as, such as events or Juneteenth. We don't really perceive any issues with traffic and such since we're sort of starting at the very tail end. So appreciate the support. If you guys have any questions. Let me know.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff or Ruben this time? Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? All right, Mr. Artman.
Hi, me again. Juneteenth is a wonderful event. It's a celebratory event. I first attended a June tenth, Juneteenth event over thirty five years ago, long before I moved to Tiburon. And I have always found it to be a great. Opportunity to exchange ideas and advance. The various issues that arise in the situations. That Juneteenth. Celebrates the end of. And I think this is a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online who'd like to speak to this item?
Seeing none.
Okay, great. I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion or motion.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilor there, please.
So I would just like to move that we approve the closure from two to seven and that we authorize the budget amendment of seventy five hundred for Juneteenth.
Thank you. May I get a second?
I would like to make a comment.
Oh, yeah, please, Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Yes, I, I, I certainly would let someone else second the motion. I'd second it if I wasn't about to talk so much. But I also would like to point out. That there's continued consternation about the closure of Main Street and the lack of a policy. And urge of the council to just sit down and work with. The chamber. And. All the parties who depend on closing. Main Street because there are many of them. I got an email about another. Potential closure from someone. And so I think we need as a council to do this in the future. The other thing I want to address, I totally support. The budget amendment at this time. And I just want to reassure the public and even us. That the DITF ad hoc strategic planning committee is working on a strategic plan. For discussion by the entire task force. And once that there's closure on that, it'll make budgeting ahead much easier. And with that, I will second the motion.
Yeah, that's, that's great to hear, Alice. Thank you for your work on that.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Councilor Wallner.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm delighted to see this happening again. I'm delighted to vote. Enthusiastically for it. I think this is one of the. And I think it's worth recognizing that this is one of the. Wonderful outcomes of having established the. Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. It's that in addition to actually having the celebration. Tiburon is becoming known far and wide for being a community that has. A wonderful Juneteenth celebration, a wonderful Diwali celebration. Now we have a Nauru celebration. These diverse celebrations and celebrations of diversity are fantastic and I'm so glad our town. Has this growing reputation for hosting them and welcoming people.
Yeah, I wanted to say one more thing. That's okay. I just, I also wanted to take a moment. To thank Ruben Kara, who's a task force member who just spoke for his work on, on these events. And I remember the first. Juneteenth event. When the task force was brand new. And it really brought. People from everywhere to Tiburon, you know, to celebrate Juneteenth. And it was such a fantastic event, you know, I, I think you're right. John, that people are really recognizing Tiburon for our diversity and for our work. In diversity and inclusion. So, thank you. And while we're thanking, I really think we should acknowledge and thank the chamber for their support and. And their help.
Yeah, well said. So we do have a motion and a second. So at this point I will ask that all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. With that, are there any town manager reports that we need to hear?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and there is no council member reports even contemplated on the agenda, so I will adjourn the meeting.
And, and now that we're adjourned, I, I just have a procedural question.